It's 4:35. So I'm gonna start, you know, out of respect for the representatives in the city and administration, and as well as my colleagues and our guests today. Obviously, we have Councilor Davila's on board. And I would at least expect that I, um, yes, I'm expecting that our council, that Councilor Hurst would be here very shortly, if he's as well.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, and yes, I'm starting to see some of the councilors show up now. Okay. If there's no objections then, and I think we have, we have staff's quorum. Our president is here, and I know Councilor Letterman is also a member of the committee. So if there's no objections, I'd like to start the meeting off, and everybody pretty much knows who we are. I don't think we have to go through those types of formalities. The reason for this meeting is the implementation of the city's social media policy. I'm hopeful that we can get some clarity on how it operates and how its impact is affecting the city. We know that people have lost their jobs, and I'm certainly, I'm sure there's been damage to people's reputations because of it as well. I asked everybody to be as respectful as they can, and be aware that we are trying to stop as close to 5:30 as possible, and the hard stop will be at 5:45. And I'm gonna leave that in the hands of Focus Springfield with a short reminder. I always have to leave, they do. Please, everybody, be conscious of your mics. And I have some questions, but I would much rather hear from my colleagues and help facilitate this meeting. So if I'm, if there's not any objections, I'm gonna start with the representatives from the administration. If Mr. Mahoney could give us, as the head of, I believe, is in attendance, as well as our captain from the police department. Mr. Mahoney, you're the head of human resources. If I'm under the correct assumption, social media policy would fall under the purview of human resources. So could you give us a very brief overview of the policy for the purpose of clarity?
Yeah, Councilor, first I want to point out, it's Deputy Daniels with me tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Daniels.
So, social media policy started out as an executive order issued by the mayor in August of 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I can't hear Bill. Yeah, I can't hear him.
Bill, could you move up closer to the microphone, or?
The, the social media policy started out in August of 2017, when it was issued as an executive order by the mayor. We then took that policy, and we brought that to the unions. We have 12 unions on the city side of government. We issued that to each of them and gave them the opportunity to meet with the Labor Relations Department, and if they want to impact bargain anything on that policy, we gave them that opportunity. So we bargained that into 11 of the 12 contracts at this point. It's not the exact same in each contract. There's been some modifications based on what the different unions were asking for, but, you know, we have, we have it in the vast majority of our contracts at this point, and that's really the history of bargaining on the social media policy. I would add that it's not unique to Springfield. You know, you can look at other areas, cities and towns, and they also have some sort of social media policy.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the, my colleagues, anybody would like to start with some questions?
Um.
Councilor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, and I'm not asking to give me personal details on any specific person, but I want to know, based on the different social media policies that have been negotiated through the unions, how do you determine which individuals are going to get offered a retirement plan? Which individual's information is gonna go to the media to include their name and information like that? Because all of that, to me, is like, pretty private, and it's a human relations type of situation. So how do you determine when you're going to release names, or when you're going to not? And how do you determine who gets retirement and who gets terminated?
So, Councilor, I don't release any names to the media. That's nothing that I do or have done in the past. So if we have, for any type of disciplinary matter, I don't pick up the phone and call the media and say, you know, "We have a disciplinary case." That doesn't happen with my office. So I don't know how they do get to the media, but they don't come through me, that's for sure. And with respect to, we don't offer a retirement package if someone is vested in the retirement system, and we've brought, we've brought notice of charges. If they go down and retire before we, before the hearing is held, that's their right to go down there and retire and leave city service. That's up to them.
So it's up to them to retire, as opposed to getting terminated and maybe losing those benefits? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I don't think they would lose those benefits if they were, if they were terminated by us, and they were, they were a vested city employee, and they were charged with violating the city's social media policy. I don't think they're gonna lose their pension. I think a lot of them, though, would rather not have a termination on their record after, you know, 30 years of service with the city, and, you know, go out that way. So what they do is, what could happen is, they may just decide they're gonna retire rather than facing the disciplinary hearing.
Councilor Davila?
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilor Edwards. Deputy Edwards, Deputy Goodsee, you, and Mahoney, good to see you as well. I do have several questions, but I'm gonna keep it limited, and maybe I can look around later. First, Mahoney, if you could send me a copy of the executive order, I don't believe I have gotten one, I really would like to review that executive order issued by the mayor back in 2017. And, just real quickly, if I may, you said that 11 out of the 12 unions agree with the executive order, and only one, there were some slight changes. Is, that's correct, right?
Not exactly. So there is, there is an executive order that was issued by the mayor, and we've used that with the eight non-public safety units. The public safety units have a little bit different policies going on based on their individual departments.
So you're saying that there is eight different orders?
Well, it's a good point, Councilor. There's, there's one executive order that came out of the mayor's office. We then issued that to the, to the 12 unions on the city side of government, and we asked them if they wanted to bargain the impact of that order. So of that group, at least, at least three of them have bargained minor changes to that executive order that, you know, coincided with what the union was hoping to, you know, achieve in the negotiations with us. So I can say that, you know, at least, at least three unions have made a few, like, very minor changes to it. And then the public safety units, we have different bargaining that we did with them, and they were adopted, I think, for their contracts. And again, one is not.
What if it possible that we can also get a copy of those changes with those respective unions accordingly?
Yeah, sure, I can send that, yes, I can send that to you.
Thank you. Mahoney, so, who reviews, whenever there's a social media policy violation, who reviews the complaint?
It's gonna be, the department is going to review that complaint, and Labor Relations may assist with that review process.
Okay, all right. And finally, if I may, so that I can move on to my colleagues' other questions. My question regarding the social media policy, it's, my final question is regarding the, the stuff that the city puts out itself on the social media. I like to believe that it's in concurrent with the mayor's executive order. How and who reviews what material is posted on social media from the city itself?
I, I, I don't have that answer, Councilor, I can get that for you, but I don't have that answer. It may be, I guess it depends on the department. Some of the departments may have their own webpage where they put out their own information, and it's reviewed within that department, and then other things may just go through onto the city's webpage. But that's really, it's not really a labor relations question. It's more of a, I can check with 18 on that, to get, get your answer.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I do have some more questions, but I'm gonna yield to my colleagues, just so that they can indulge in the questions. Thank you.
Councilor Davila, I'll make a point of getting back to you. Councilor Hurst?
Yes, just a question, Bill, as a follow-up to Councilor Davila's, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for putting this important meeting together. Did those, when you incorporated the social media policy into those collective bargaining contracts, did they come back before the council for approval? Did we approve, or did they have to, or did we approve those?
Uh, I believe they all came back. I can check on that. I know, for instance, we incorporated many of the policies actually into the contracts, and if we did that, they would've come back to you. And some of them, I'm not certain if we bargained them into the contracts or not.
Yeah, I think that information is pretty relevant. So if you could get that information, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can tell you, like, the fire chiefs contract, it's, it's in the contract. I can tell you that the IBPO, it's in the contract. Police supervisors, 99% sure it's in the contract. We had a couple that...
But when you made those amendments, Bill, did they have to, did you bring them back before the city council, when you incorporated those in? You did.
We did, yeah.
They did, okay, all right, sounds good. Well, just double-check for me to make sure that, that they all did indeed come back before the city council.
Yeah, I can't say that, that it happened with all of them, because someone was just impact bargaining, but it may have been midterm, which we're allowed to do, but, you know, I can give you an update on that.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands, I'm gonna jump in here. Mr. Mahoney, matter of fact, it may be easier for you to just slide forward with your chair, if you'd like to be closer to the mic.
I'm ready to touch up some tonight, Councilor.
Okay, but, you said that the, these are investigated primarily by the departments, and with Labor Relations. I assume, when you say Labor Relations, that's you?
That's me, or one of the attorneys on the staff.
Okay. There's a lot of misinformation circulating throughout the community around this issues, and I'd like to, and maybe the deputy might want to go jump in here on this one. Is there, I would assume that if there is a complaint involving a police officer, that would be investigated by the commissioner or her agents. But is there any involvement in Springfield Police Department in investigating complaints of social media violations? And who is actually monitoring these complaints? So that's one for either one of you, but...
Springfield Police Department, as far as policies and rules and regulations violations, we only investigate employees that work for us. We wouldn't investigate people from other agencies. That would be up to the department head and to the HR department.
Okay. Obviously, I don't see anybody here from the law department, so, Mr. Mahoney, are, to your knowledge, and is inappropriate for us to be made aware, is there any pending litigation related to this enforcement of our social media policies?
It's really, it really is a question for the law department. I believe, I thought there was a case that was pending, but I haven't seen the complaint, so I think it's really a question for the law department.
Yeah, actually, I expected and anticipated, because of the controversies around this issue, that somebody from the law department would have been in attendance, but that is something that we, if, is, if it is all possible and appropriate, would you relay that back to them, that the councilors should be made aware as soon as possible? And that would have been one of the questions we would have anticipated asking, as if they had have been present today. Councilor Whitfield?
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair, and again, I want to echo, thank you for holding this meeting. So I'm sorry, Bill, I just need to, like, circle back a little bit to my original question. I'm trying to figure out, because this social media policy, and then when you hear the mayor speak, it's like, we have zero tolerance for any of the comments on social media that, that goes against the social media policy, like, zero tolerance, zero. And so then, there's another instance where an officer put something on social media and got, like, a day's suspension, and that was after the social media policy was put in place. Because I did, no, it wasn't? Am I, there was no social media policy at that time?
No, Councilor, that incident happened, I forget whether it included the social media.
I can't hear you, Deputy, sorry.
Okay, when that incident happened, it happened prior to the official social media policy being implemented.
Okay, they both happened in 2017, right? Can you give me the official date of the social media policy? Because in front of me, I have it as August 18th, 2017.
Yeah, that's the, that is the executive order in August of 17.
Then we have to negotiate.
We then had to negotiate with the unions. So there wasn't a social media policy with the unions until we had completed collective bargaining with them on that issue.
And when, do you have the date for when this policy was actually in effect?
For the, for the, for the unions, I do not. I can get it for you, though.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, we'll look forward to those. And then, I want to know, do, when it's reviewed by whatever department, do, do anyone look at the intent? Or is it just like, we're gonna go by these words in this post, and then we're just gonna terminate employees? Like, is it a, is it, is it just gonna be like that going forward? If someone puts something, do you ever look at the intent of, of the post? Or are you just gonna say, zero tolerance, we're gonna fire anyone that violates this policy?
It's all on a case-by-case basis. You know, we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at everything in the, everything that was posted, and we're gonna interview the person, and we're gonna read some conclusions, and then the appointed authority's gonna make a decision. So I can't tell you one way or the other, but I can tell you that we're gonna investigate as thoroughly as we can, and then we're gonna pass it on to the appointed authority, and he or she will have to make a decision what to do.
Okay, if that's not the message I'm getting from the mayor, what I get is zero tolerance, and then there's some tolerance in some, for some cases, and then there's not for others. And so, to me, it looks like it's zero tolerance sometimes. So I think that if, if it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, then maybe the communication needs to be a little bit different. Also, is there any, like, disciplinary actions for folks that leak information to the media? Because that is personnel and personal. And so if, if, if the person was found out, is there any disciplinary actions for that?
Councilor, again, I'd have to take a look at what the specifics are of your, of your question. If someone, I mean, we have in the, we have in those policies, in many of those policies, that if someone released PHI, or released social security numbers of our employees, or something else, that's gonna be a problem.
Okay.
Councilor Letterman?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions for Attorney Mahoney. Attorney Mahoney, you mentioned that the social media policy was initially implemented as an executive order from the mayor. I have a copy of it that was sent to me at my request, and it says, "Adopted and effective August 18, 2017." So you've sort of testified here that, subsequent to that executive order, it was bargained or included as part of impact bargaining with 11 of 12 unions, correct?
Yes.
So anyone who's not a member of a union is, would be covered under it just by the executive order itself?
Yes.
So how is the social media policy, how does, you know, how does enforcement of the social media policy differ in some of the contracts versus non-bargaining employees? And actually, first, how many non-bargaining employees do we actually have?
There's approximately probably 300 non-bargaining.
So how does enforcement of the policy differ between bargaining and non-bargaining employees?
Again, if it's a, the departments will investigate an allegation of the violation, that they need assistance from the Labor Relations Department in the investigation we assess.
So is it, is the enforcement primarily driven by public or internal reports?
Yes.
Is there any sort of monitoring of employees' social media accounts, either by human resources or the police department?
None that I'm aware of. I can, I can tell you, Councilor, I do not go looking for anybody's social media at all. I have far better things to do than to get online and start looking for people's social media accounts.
Deputy, I'd pose, I'd pose the same question to you.
Yeah, the police department, the only time we go into the social media accounts is when we're looking at new recruits and new cadets. That's one of the things, when we're doing our background investigation, we definitely look at their own social media. But after that, no, sir.
Thank you, Deputy. And then, so who, who has the ultimate authority on whether the social media policy was in fact violated?
The appointed authority for that department, for the, the department that that employee works in, that person will make that decision.
And how does Labor Relations, what role does Labor Relations play in the investigation? As you mentioned, if the, that the department carries out its own investigation, but it can request assistance from Labor Relations, is that accurate?
Yeah.
So what does it look like when Labor Relations assistance is requested?
We would come in, and we would conduct the interviews with the employee, and we'd ask, we'd ask a number of questions, and we'd make...
What types of questions would you ask?
I don't, I don't want to get into that in this forum.
Well, what, what, what types of factors are considered, I guess, is my question, in determining whether the policy was violated?
We would look at, we would look at the post, and we'd have a discussion with the employee about it.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to jump in there at this one. Mr. Mahoney, with all your vast experience in, in human resources, do you not see that this implementation, implementation of this type of policy being kind of like, be walking through a museum with somebody else? Isn't it kind of arbitrary in terms of what somebody might post, might be considered offensive or not offensive? I mean, to be honest with you, I've heard from, I've seen some comments made by some department heads in editorials and in, well, my colleagues know that I describe it as propaganda from the administration that I find a little offensive, you know, just because of its inaccuracy or inappropriateness. So by what standard? I mean, this is not like where, you know, it's a simple theft and, and very clearly black and white. How do, how do you guys make these judgments? I know this was one of the conversations when we were back, back when Councilor Clado Concepcion was on the council. I believe Councilor Hurst came on, that we were talking about establishing a Facebook page, and it was a concern about the city councilors using the Facebook page for sharing their own campaigns. We don't have access to the, to the city's Facebook page, but quite often, a lot of, you know, who gets to be the arbiter of this? And, and so, let me just stop at that point, and maybe you can, you know, you're the expert on human resources, and how, how do, how do we make sure that this is not something that's used as a tool by a department head when no other option for retaliation against an employee is, is available to them?
Well, this, this policy is not to be used as retaliation against anybody. That's not the purpose of the policy, that's not how this policy has been used. So I guess I'll put that out there right away. It's a policy like our other policies. You know, we have a sexual harassment policy, we have an anti-harassment policy, we, we're gonna look at the facts, and the facts take us to the conclusion. So we do that with, same thing with the social media policy. If the, if we have the post, and it's been, and we've looked at it, and we've analyzed it, we've interviewed the employee, then we take a look at the policy versus the post, and we make a determination as to whether or not the policy is violated.
Okay. Councilor Hurst?
And then, Councilor Davila had his hand up before me, so I'll defer to Councilor Davila.
Councilor Davila?
Thank you, Chair. Bill, thank you for giving us explanation, but I have to say that every question, winning answer leads to three more questions in my mind. And I gotta be honest here, I, I am a little troubled. I'm a little troubled, because as you guys were just kind of alluding to, there's potentially a lot of issues here with First Amendment issues. I have learned in my life that I may say something people may not like, but it's my right to do so. And I understand, once it comes into labor, it's, it's a little, it's different, for which I am a little troubled, that we have, if I'm correct, at least eight, 11 different versions of the executive order. So, so I guess I get, that's my first question. How, how is the first, the employee's First Amendment protected?
So, first of all, Councilor, there's not 11 different versions of the executive order, there's only one executive order, right? So the policy itself has been negotiated with the unions, so they may have a different policy that they work under near that executive order, and some of them really have something completely different than the executive order, except their own policy negotiated into the contract. So there's, there's a little distinction there. There is a case in Massachusetts called Pereira versus Commonwealth, and that's the similar case, it's an SJC case on First Amendment. So we would look back at that as to whether or not the employee is engaged in making a public, speaking about a, a public issue or not. And then, when there is a balancing test, if in fact the employee is talking about a public issue, then there's a balancing test about the employee's interest in making that statement versus the employee, versus the employer's right in running its organization. That's a very simple analysis that I've given you, there's much more to be done on the case, but that's what we look at.
I, I, I thank you for that explanation, Bill, but I still stand by my initial comment of at least roughly 11 different versions, because, you know, if you're bargaining with the unions, the language of the executive order, one word could cost you your job. One simple word that the department head may interpret differently. There's, I don't see a consistency here of how it's going to be enforced in terms of really also protecting the employee's First Amendment right. So, but I'm sure that was gonna be more discussion in the future. I just wanna, I'm not, look, I'm not gonna miss any words here, gentlemen. It seems to me that this policy is indeed being used as retaliation. Now, it might be purposely or not purposely, I don't know. If that's the case, I'm going to be extremely disappointed, because people, First Amendment rights deserve to be protected, and it doesn't send a good message to the city. Well, the question is, why do I say that? A little while ago, you took us through all these cases, I asked you about what does the city, who monitors what the city posts? And I have to say that, kind of an argument to my retaliation point, back in March, I believe it was, when the Black Lives Matter started, the police department itself put out posts regarding councilors who were organizing those events, which, in my mind, were very questionable of the intent of that post. But that's a whole different issue, I mean, I would love to know who wrote it, who was, was it ordered to be written, under what reason? So what I'm saying is, I'm very concerned that this is indeed being used to weed out dissenters, quote-unquote, troublemakers, and people who don't follow the directives, or who maybe not proceed to follow. So I think that we have a lot of work to do on this, so I got one more question. I'm just giving you what it appears to me, if, the good old saying, if you walk like a dog and bark like a dog, it's a dog. And so, with that, I yield, uh, Councilor, uh, Chair.
Councilor Hurst?
Yes. Bill, has anyone ever not been fired, who's had their social media post reviewed, that you know of?
I, I, I don't know, sitting here, if that's the case or not, I don't know.
Can you find that information out for me? And then I, my follow-up question is, why did we not bargain in the executive order to all of the collective bargaining units? I mean, if we're bargaining, what was, what was, so, I mean, what was, why didn't we bargain in the executive order? It just seems to me like that's, if that's what the mayor wanted, why wouldn't we bargain in the executive order? What was the hesitancy from folks?
Well, we, we bargained the executive order with... Well, we bargained the executive order with eight of the city's bargaining units. And with the other four, they had social media policies that were more designed for the police department and for the fire department specifically, so we bargained those. And we have one that we're still, we'll be bringing up in the next round of negotiations.
What was the significant difference, Bill? Do you know off the top of your head or, or no? And if not, you can get it to me later.
It's just more designed for police work and more designed for firework and considering that, you know, they deal with PHI and handle a lot of things that the other departments don't. I believe that was the distinction.
Yeah, I don't understand that. I guess I'm a little confused over that, but maybe once we get the actual, the differences which you'll send to us, correct, Bill, then I can do my own analysis of it.
I'll send you, I'm making a note here to send you the, the different changes to the executive order and the police and fire social media policy.
Thank you. And then in light of everything that has occurred, Bill, have, has the administration thought about revising this executive order or renegotiating with some of the collective bargaining units so that the policy is not applied as rigidly as it appears to have been applied in the most recent incidents or actually in every incident that I've, that I've seen, that has been made public that I've seen? Has there been any discussion around that, Bill?
I have not had any discussion around that.
Um, do you think there should be discussion around that, Bill?
I'm going to hold any of my comments.
Fair enough, I'll defer to the rest of my colleagues.
Bill, can you ask, can you speak on to how do I have a right as a private citizen to be trolling Facebook or any other social media platform, come across something that I don't like about an employee and then would I file a complaint? And would that complaint hold the same weight as say, me as a city employee and a complaint being made by one of my colleagues or a supervisor?
Yeah, it's a violation of the policy, it's something we're going to look at.
Counselor Whitfield, are you all set or, I'm sorry, Counselor Davila, are you, are you all set?
I don't think, I don't think he put his hand down from the last time.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, I, I, they got more of a question, but I yield to the colleagues, I mean, more of a comment, but I yield to the colleagues.
Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you very much. I don't think your question was answered on how would someone internally file a complaint against someone else's social media policy? Do they just send you an email? Is there a process like citizens file complaints with, you know, against an officer or against someone that works for the city? How's that process work internally?
The complaint typically goes to the department head.
It just goes to the department head, okay. What role does the mayor play in the investigation? Because he stated to the media that he would be directly involved, so what role does he play in the complaint process?
I'd have to, Counselor, you're going to have to give me the context of when he said that and I'll have to get back to you on it.
I mean, he said it, so whether I have it right here or not, it was said in the media, so why do I have to give you the media quote? I mean, I could try to find it, but why, why do I have to give you that?
I don't know that he said it, so I want to see what he's talking about. You know, you're repeating something, you're giving a hearsay statement that the mayor said, I just want to see what the mayor said.
All right, I'll send you the statement and then in writing, I would like to know what role he plays in the investigation because I don't, I don't understand if that's something that you don't know. What role does the chief diversity officer play in these complaints?
I don't know that she has a role in these complaints.
Okay, so who interprets the post?
She's going to have a role if there is a harassment complaint or there's a sexual harassment complaint. I would expect that the diversity and inclusion officer will be involved in those. If this ties into that somehow, if this ties into that somehow, she may have a role in it.
Well, do, or do you think these employees are diverse?
What do you mean?
The employees that's involved in the social media posts. She's a diversity and inclusion officer, doesn't really, shouldn't matter if it's, what type of complaint it is, if it's harassment or social media or, I mean, it's diversity and inclusion.
Well, definitely, obviously, harassment, sexual harassment, they won't refer to directly the CDIO being involved. That's, her role is spelled out in those policies.
And I'm asking that because I want to get to who interprets the post? Who interprets the translation of the cultural context in the post? For example, if I say something is dope, somebody else might interpret that to say, they got dope over there, meaning drugs, right? But that's not what I would mean. If I say, oh, this girl over here is fat, I might be not saying that her weight is fat, but I'm talking about PHAT, like, pretty fat, you know? So who determines the cultural competencies of these posts, the context? If the diversity officer is not included, who, who's going to interpret that?
Certainly, they're going to ask the employee that the complaint is made about. What did you make, why did you write that? What's the purpose of it?
And do they actually take that information at face value when the decision is made? Or do they just say, thanks for your explanation and I'll still make my final determination?
It's going to go into the report and then the appointed authorities got to make a decision.
Okay, because this doesn't feel right. And so, if you haven't considered reevaluating the social media policy, I think that you should and I think that you should bring this information back to the mayor. I think it is, just like Counselor Davila said, being used as a retaliation method against some employees. I mean, you guys, and also as Counselor Davila said, there was a post on the police department's social media page that kind of left out peaceful protest when they said there's going to be a peaceful protest by, I think it was the Central Girls that they were doing a protest. And then when we were doing a protest at Nathan Bill's Day, purposely left out the word peaceful, got the community riled up thinking it was going to be a riot and nothing happened. So I think that that was a defamation of my character and my colleagues' character to even insinuate that we would do something in the community that was not going to be peaceful. But I don't think that was ever looked at. And so I think that we need to revisit the social media policy also when it comes to these different police departments. We also need to determine when we're going to, you know, put information out to the public, just like the defacing of the mural. That information is not being put out to the community yet. An employee's name is being put out to the community, which I think is very tasteless. I think that that is defaming his character, but when a real defamation take place, that information is not going to be put out to the community. And so those are, those are my final comments because I know from, based on the conversation that we're having, the questions are not going to get answered and we're going to have to follow up or have an additional meeting.
Counselor Allen, please. You're muted, Counselor Allen. Counselor Allen, you are still muted.
Yeah, here we go, I just got it, I just walked in the house, sorry. My question is more on the progress, on the discipline side, Bill. Do, what, can you give me an example of other violations that people could, you know, other things that could happen that people would get terminated right away for? Not all the examples, but just a couple other ones.
Well, certainly finding that, you know, there's a couple.
Okay, so, my questions are more on that end of things. Would it be, you know, we didn't put in progressive discipline in this, apparently. And I'm sure there was a reason for that, but I guess that's, that's kind of where I get stuck a little bit. I'm not even saying that what we do is wrong, I'm just, in most cases of most violations, the things that I'd be aware of, there would be some sort of progressed and how I can phrase the question you can ask, formally, we haven't talked about it, but, but that is kind of where I am on it. Not, I'm not even against it, I'm just trying to understand that part. Because there is some judgment, there could be some judgment involved in different interpretations of something. So, anyway. I guess that's my comment, I can't come up with, I can't phrase the question the way I want to phrase it, so. But if you could just look at that, if we talk offline, that's probably what I would ask about, something along the lines of that. Thank you.
Thank you, it's Counselor Allen, Counsel Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, kind of to a similar point and maybe, I don't know if this is how Counselor Allen meant to phrase it, but this is what I had written down, which was, you know, we've spoken a little bit and we have seen publicly some of the outcomes of violation of the social media policy lead to terminations. I guess my question is, I don't see in the actual executive order that it necessarily says violation of the policy shall lead to termination. So is that accurate? Is it really up to the appointing authority to determine how to, you know, discipline a violation of the social media policy? Is it at their discretion?
I believe it's at their discretion.
And so if they, if they chose to implement progressive discipline for it, i.e., you know, a note in a file, a conversation, a suspension, that would be, that would be their prerogative.
All discipline is subject to the appointing authority's determination as to what's appropriate.
And does that change in any of the bargained agreements?
Can you say that again, please?
In any of the, in any of the bargained agreements? Because I presume some of the union contracts might speak more specifically to progressive discipline. So in the union-protected positions, are any of, do any of those speak to actual discipline steps as a result of violation of the social media policy?
No, not with respect to the social media policy, but they do speak to different steps. We have, some, some of the contracts have more detailed progressive disciplinary language in the contracts with the caveat that depending on what occurred, we don't have to follow steps one, two, and three. We can go right to termination if we think that's appropriate. So, but to your point, Counselor, if I can just follow up on it quickly.
Certainly.
Keep, keep in mind that in all those 12 contracts, there's going to be a grievance arbitration procedure that those bargaining unions or bargaining unit members can avail themselves of if they're not probationary. And then same thing with a lot of our employees have civil service protections that they hold permanent status. And again, they can take this down to the Civil Service Commission in Boston, should they wish to do that.
And my last question on that same line, Bill, is how does that relate to, to similar policies? For example, a policy on harassment or, or something like that? Are those also at the discretion of the supervisor or do those have built-in penalties for violation?
It's going to be, it's going to be at this, okay, it's going to come down to what, what do the facts show? And if the facts show, you know, something very serious, I'm sure the appointing authority would move for termination.
And the, and the, the ruler, you know, the person that makes the decision on the facts, that is the appointing authority ultimately?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Hurst, please.
I'm actually all set, I'll, I'll yield to Counselor Davila or anyone else who has a question. Thank you.
Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill, thank you and Deputy, thank you for being here and answering these questions. Mr. Chair, I have to say that this is probably one of the few meetings in which I leave the meeting with more questions than I came in with. I think this whole process is extremely great. I don't see consistency, I see a lot of twisting of language and I'm very concerned, I'm very concerned how the social media is being used. It appears to me that it's being weaponized and I get real problems with this, I really do. With that being said, what do we do? Because at the end of the day, we've got to come up with solutions. I'm sure, Mr. President, it goes without saying that we are going to have follow-ups accordingly to this. But one of the things that I would like to throw out there as a potential solution that we can still think of will be to some sort of, just kind of a brainstorm and thinking outside of the box here, sort of a review committee when the, when the social media policy complaint is filed. Because the way I'm looking at this, we basically have, well, we, the administration has gone at people's head at all times on their employment. Anybody could make a complaint from nowhere, I could be trolling people's emails all day and inundate people with complaints just because I may dislike this particular employee or I disagree with them. So I am a little, very troubled with the way this is being potentially weaponized. So what I'd like to suggest is sort of some sort of review committee. What is that going to look like? I don't know, but a review committee that reflects the city, by the way, not, not just, you know, finger pointing or pointing with fingers, a review committee that truly reflects the community. So I look forward to the next meetings and again, Bill, thank you for these questions, I know I've been exactly easy. Deputy, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time and for putting this meeting together.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Counsel Hurst, are you, do you have another question?
Yeah, it really is just a comment. Bill, if, if you and the administration in the wake of everything that has occurred are not reassessing this process, then that is more problematic than the actual policy itself. It would just seem to me that, that it would make sense for folks to take a look at some of the missteps within the policy that are leading to determinations. And if we're not doing that, the residents just deserve better, our employees deserve better. And, you know, I didn't agree with the lirivieri and we're probably not supposed to name names, but I didn't agree with that firing, yeah, I didn't agree with that one, understood, I heard you. I didn't agree with that one and I didn't agree with many others that followed because I knew exactly what happened there would ultimately result in what has occurred thus far and what will continue to occur if you don't address these issues and revise this policy. And then the second thing that I'll just echo from some of my colleagues is that we need to address what is being posted by various departments. And it ought to be more positive than what it is that I've seen previously. So it would seem to me that when you're going to reassess this policy and hopefully make it better, that you'll also take a look at some of the posts that have occurred and some of the departments throughout the city and address those as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I don't see any other hands in the queue, so I'm assuming that everybody's had an opportunity to speak. If there's anyone who would like to make a statement, this is the time to do it before I finalize this meeting. I've already said at the beginning that I intended, if necessary, to have another meeting. And I see Counsel Whitfield has something to say, so I'm going to just shut up at that moment and allow her to speak.
I know, I said that was my final comment, but my real final comment is, please have people at the meeting who can answer the questions. Some of the questions we asked you had to be answered by the law department, yet no one's here from the law department so that we don't have to keep having continuations of meetings. Please have everyone necessary at the meeting to answer our questions. And also, I would like to echo what Counselor Davila said and what Counselor Hurst said. These policies need to be looked at because in, in my eyes, it's, it's used as a retaliation tool and it's used to get rid of maybe folks that, you know, others want to get rid of. I also wanted to just comment really quickly on what Deputy Rupert said. I have talked to an officer who will remain anonymous that said that you guys use social media to also look for like criminal activity and that you have a couple of individuals that actually search, search the Facebook and other social media avenues regularly. search the me, uh, Facebook and other social media avenues regularly.
That's some crime analysis unit? When you guys originally asked me the question, I thought you were talking about, do we monitor our employees?
Oh, okay.
On a regular basis? And that answer is no. As far as looking through social media for, um, possible crimes, so, that, that. We do solve a lot of crimes, but you know, things that people say on social media, but it's mostly when we, when we're around, we're looking for criminal behavior.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear on that point. But um, I just wanted to say, please have the, um, the appropriate people in the room so that we don't have to have several follow-up meetings. And please, um, bring the message back to the mayor to look at the social media policy and, and try to improve that.
Well, I'm gonna, I see no hands in the queue. I appreciate everybody's time. I'm gonna make closing statements and then we're gonna move out and to the other business of our lives. Um, but as the messengers to the administration, let me be clear that our, myself and my colleagues are hearing what is the perception of our community. And many people in our community are, are, believe and are of the perception that this is, has, this, this policy has been weaponized. It is arbitrary in its implementation. And there are times when we have heard one particular, um, department head, um, because we're not using names, but one particular department head made comments, not only on social media or through other means, but we've heard of, I mean, we've heard things said that we interpret as offensive or we term, interpret as inaccurate and even in some cases unnecessarily to be said. My own personal feelings are, is, and what I'm really uncomfortable about is, is that the blade cuts both ways. So whether we're talking about a liberal comment or a conservative comment, this is quite often when things are discussed of like this controversial issue, it's racialized and it's perceived as being a black or a brown issue, when in reality, um, the blade can cut both ways. And um, and I think we need to be very careful of the slippery slope that we're on. We're talking about in most cases, not people utilizing, um, the, the iPads that belong to the city that are issued to the city councils. We're not talking about people making statements during work hours or in their capacity as an employees of the city or of the taxpayers. But what they're saying on their own terms and, and own time and how people perceive it and it is then being used against them. Um, you know, I, I've said many times in the past to those who would listen that the deliverer of the message doesn't get to decide how it's received. And I've said to people who are married, particularly to the men in my life, that have you ever said something to your wife? As soon as you got it out your mouth, you spent the next five to 10 minutes trying to explain what you meant to say. Well, that's what social media is like today because we say things, but we cannot attach our intent to what we say. And in the workplace, when we say things, or we, and, or in this case, outside of the workplace, people are losing their jobs, their reputations are being stained and um, their families are being directly impacted because of somebody else's interpretation of what somebody said. Um, so I, I just would like to, um, I'd like to give my colleagues an opportunity as we close this meeting to walk away, have some further discussions among themselves uh, individually and with our colleague, our, our, our community. Because the thing is, is we hear from them. Um, and it's, it's through the phone calls and through our personal conversations that it has brought to the need, in my mind, to have to host this type of meeting. And um, so I'm, I'm very appreciative of everybody's time and uh, but I don't think this issue's been resolved. And whether or not we bring this up as another subject matter or agenda item on, on a future meeting will be dependent on what I hear from my colleagues and my constituents. So uh, if there's no other questions or comments, I sincerely appreciate, uh, the deputy and Mr. Mahoney, um, your time. And certainly my colleagues who have taken the time to spend it with me, uh, and with us today. So if no other questions. And finally, thank you Focus Springfield and to our city council staff for helping organize this as well. Thank you.